Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Council's special meeting. This City Council's special meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. Calling this meeting to order, and if Krista, if you'd like to call the role, please.
Yes, Councilmember Coco?
Here.
Councilmember Soltis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Harjehousen?
Present.
Councilmember Simoah?
Here.
Councilmember Porter?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Wagner?
I am here. Thank you, Krista, and welcome, everybody, to our meeting tonight. First on our agenda is to discuss the proposal to submit a ballot proposition seeking voter approval of a sales and use tax within the city in the amount of two tenths of one percent for the purpose of paying for or financing the cost of transportation improvements. And I'm turning this over to Regan or Casey.
I'll just mention something real quick.
Yes.
Just a reminder to council, you know, we had a discussion about funding some critical services here in the city at our summit, and council asked us to bring back some proposals that might work and might fund what we're looking at at that summit. And so Casey's put a lot of work together for these two different options that we can discuss tonight and then see next steps that the council might have. And so we're here for any, answer any questions in case we'll kind of review each of these, and I think probably kind of together, if that's okay, mayor and council, instead of one at a time, it might make more sense that way. So go ahead and turn it over to Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Krista, can I share my screen, please? Yes, you should have access to that. All right, everybody see that, okay? Okay, perfect. So I kind of put a summary up here on the two different things that we'd be talking about tonight, the Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax, or TBD, and then the Criminal Justice Sales Tax, or otherwise known as the Public Safety Sales Tax. So this just is kind of just a summary, because they do have a lot of similarities, and there's just a few minor differences, obviously, on what they can be used for, but elections and things like that. So the very first one that we're going to talk about is the Transportation Benefit District. And just a little bit of history for those of you that aren't familiar with our TBD. It was formed in 2013, and there was a change in 2015 that allowed the city to assume the rights and responsibilities of the TBD, so I didn't basically have to report it as a separate entity. It got rolled into the city, and it's just in our street fund now, and we just reported that way. So it's not its own separate entity anymore. So what that means is it allows us the same things that we were able to do when it was its own separate entity, which is the $20 vehicle license fee that we're currently doing. And those vehicle license fees, as you know, they were locked up in some legislation and have recently been released to the city as of last year. So we were able to recognize those revenues and move forward with those. So state law for the TBD, for the sales tax part of it, we are able to impose a 0.2% sales and use tax. It's subject to a simple majority vote within the city, and the measure can be placed on the ballot at any special primary or general election. And I put a little graph there below on your blue sheet that you can see, so you can see kind of how our elections have done in the past. So this will be our fourth try if we end up moving forward with this. And you can see how close they were in those three attempts that we've made. They really have been fairly close, fairly close calls. So just as an analysis that we've done, the city has kind of several options available when considering the adoption of the sales and use tax. Some cities have chosen to keep both the TBD vehicle license fee as well as the sales tax. I know Eonclaw, where I live, has done that. We have both. We're also able to just do the sales tax or redo it at a lower level. If the maximum is a 0.2%, but we could always come in at a 0.1% or 0.15%, that type of thing. If we wanted to do that, that can be done through the adoption and the voter approval. But there's also a mechanism where we could eliminate the vehicle license fee if the sales tax did pass and substitute that. And that would require an ordinance just repealing that existing code provisions that impose those vehicle license fees. And then we would have just adopt those new code sections imposing the new TBD sales tax. So like I mentioned, the tax requires a voter approval by the majority of voters. The tax would be limited to paying for or financing identified transportation capital, maintenance, and improvement projects. And so those would include some of the projects that Don brings forward, which are included on the city's adopted six-year transportation improvement plan or TIP. So just for council consideration and discussion this evening, we just would need to look into certain things like the timing. If we wanted to move forward with something like this, for what election would we want to put the ballot proposition? We could do it at a November general election, a special election, which is in February, April, or in August. If we wanted to repeal the vehicle license fee, we would need to talk about timing as far as that goes, because we do have that two-month lag in sales tax. So if we wanted to continue to have some of those TVD vehicle license fees coming in until that sales tax came in. And the way with the sales tax, how that works is you're only allowed to make sales tax changes during certain times of the year. So we can only do changes January 1st, April 1st, or July 1st. So that's just another kind of thing to keep in mind as far as timing goes. And again, as far as the tax rate goes, we could set it at the maximum, the full 0.2% or some other percentage. And one other kind of funny thing with this tax is it only has a term period of 10 years. So you also have the ability to renew for one additional 10-year period. Or if you go out and you bond against this money, you could have the term of the tax match the bond. So let's say you went out and bonded, and it was a 20-year bond. You could have your tax locked in for 20 years without that renewal. But if you're not doing any debt against it, if you're just using it to pay for maintenance, overlays, potholes, sidewalks, things like that, it's only eligible for a term of 10 years with one additional renewal, which, again, the additional renewal has to go back for a vote as well. And then also, I just put some deadlines down below for the voted sales tax measures. We've already missed the August, obviously, the February, April, and August. If we wanted to look at the November, we would have to register for that in August. So this might be something more for next year, but those deadlines are there for you. And then just for budget, I use the 2019 as kind of a base year, because 2020 was just kind of a funny year for us. So if I budget for the full 0.2% sales tax, it would approximately bring in about $1,097 in revenue for the street fund. And I just kind of broke it down. I was just curious, like, what was coming in for reoccurring sources versus, like, just one-time kind of construction revenue? So I've listed that for you. 988,400 from reoccurring sources and 108,600 from construction. So by comparison, if you're looking at the $20 vehicle license fee that we currently have in place, that generates about $345,000 in revenue. So just a net revenue gain would be about $752,000 if that would have been approved back for implementation in 2019.
Casey, can I say, I'm not, I'm only seeing one chart. I'm not seeing that thing that you just mentioned with additional.
In your blue sheet.
Oh, it's in your blue sheet, sorry. And so just one important difference between the vehicle license fee and the sales tax is how the fee tax burden is distributed. So the $20 vehicle license fee is just really narrowly focused on mostly car ownership, which, within the city of Covington, is heavily skewed towards residents and households. So conversely, the 0.2% sales tax would be imposed upon a broader base. It would be on all retail sales tax transactions within the city, and thus could be paid by anybody who visits the city every year and the business community in addition to the residents. So a resident who currently pays a $20 vehicle license fee would need to spend approximately $10,000 on taxable goods and services within the city in order to generate that $20. So it really is a minor, a minor charge to the residents in opposed to the vehicle license fee. And it spreads it, spreads it amongst everybody who's using our streets. So just as far as election costs go, if we were to put this on the ballot, if we submitted it for the November 21 general election ballot, just for example, the expected costs for elections would be $40,000. If we submitted it during a special election, which is that February, April, or August, it would run around about $36,000. And this would come out of the street fund. So if we move forward, I would have to just do a budget amendment within the street fund in order to allocate those funds. So that is the TBD. Does anybody have any, like, specific questions on that one before I move forward on the public safety sales tax?
Does anybody have any questions for Casey on this one? I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. So for the public safety sales tax, this one, again, is similar that we can, but this one can only go up to 0.1%. So this is just a little bit different on that maximum. This one can be at a primary or general. So this is not one that we can do in February or in April. So it's just that August primary and November general. It takes a simple majority vote, so it's the same as the TBD. The one thing that's different about this one is we have to share our proceeds with the county. So 85% of the revenue that comes in has to go to, or comes to us. 15% of it goes to the county. So that's a little bit different than, like, the TBD was. There are also a couple of things that are exempt from public safety sales tax. Motor vehicle sales are exempt from the tax. And leases also, the first 36 months of leases. So the other thing with this one is it can be used solely for criminal justice purposes or fire protection purposes or full. And what that would mean for us is we could use it for our police services, additional officers, things of that nature. If there was additional revenue left over, we may be able to offset it with our fire protection services, our fire marshal services, those type of things. Criminal justice purposes, they have a definition for criminal justice purposes. They do not give us a definition for, for the fire services. They say that we can use it for any circumstances, any ancillary benefits to the civil justice system, including domestic violence services. So for what we've estimated, our net revenue would be after we, after the King County gets their 15%, it would be about $440,000 annually. And that would just right about cover two police officers, a little bit left over. So the increase of one tenth percent would equate to one penny on every $10 purchase or 10 cents on every $100 purchase. So that just puts a little bit in perspective of how that would hit our residents. Again, just like with the TBD, I've just listed a couple of things, like, just questions to think about. Timing, for what election would we want to possibly propose this? Would it be a November general election and August primary election? Again, when would it go into effect? Just taking into account that we can only make sales tax changes January 1st, April 1st, or July 1st? And if we want to set that at the maximum percentage of the 0.1% or a different percentage? And then as far as what the election costs would be, a little bit different than the TBD because of the primary election costs are about $33,000 versus the general election costs are about $40,000. And that's all I have on that. Does anybody have any questions on the public safety?
Does anybody have any questions for Casey on this one? I don't see anybody raising their hand. Oh, Sean.
So are we going to discuss this? Or we're just waiting for? I guess I'm just wondering when you want us to wait. And I don't really have any questions for Casey, but I'd like to hear a discussion, I guess.
That's, that's what we're here for, is to have discussion. We're just not making any decisions, but we're just providing direction after discussion. So do you have anything you'd like to?
Well, yeah, a couple of things. I, you know, Casey, I appreciate the presentation and the history around the TBD. I also appreciate the background on the criminal justice. You know, from a, from a common sense standpoint, I think both of these sales tax proposals make sense. I am a little concerned, though, in looking in the blue sheet about the approval for the TBD. We're going in the wrong direction. The actual opposition has been going up. You know, it went from almost passing to now almost 53% are opposed. So I'm worried about that one. If I had to pick one between the two, I'm worried about the TBD. If we are going to go forward with that, we'd have to do a lot of outreach to explain the differences and how this is actually benefits the, the public. Because if I remember correctly, I think almost everything that we're saying in this blue sheet is, is what we said in 2018 as well, that it would pass the cost on to the people that use the, our streets. We would likely eliminate the car tab, and we still lost. So I think we'd have to do a lot of planning and discussion on how we would educate the public better than we did in 2018. As to the public safety one, I think that makes the most sense. You know, I support that one right now. As to timing, the fire department will have a, Prop 1 is on the ballot on this primary ballot. So, you know, we'll have a lot of, we'll have some information on whether that passes or not and how the voters are feeling about taxes for public safety and fire. Given that, I, I would wait until August of next year before putting this on, on the ballot for a couple of reasons. One, we can't do it on this upcoming one, and I think November's pretty soon. And if the fire levy goes down, I think a lot of people are going to see this one as exactly the same. If it passes, obviously, the, the risk is that we'd miss that. But often, general elections in off-years tend to be a lower turnout, and people tend to be a little more, whatever I say, skeptical of government in, in off-year elections, so, or midterm elections. So those are my thoughts. So thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sean. Beth?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Wagner. So I think Sean hit on a really good point of the approval rating or the no, the no's, and the percentages going in a different direction. And I think it will take that outreach, particularly on the, on the road piece. So I think trying to do anything this year would be, we wouldn't have our, we wouldn't be able to engage the community well enough. I am curious on the, on the, on the police safety tax, why would we pay the 14, the percentage to, where is it, 15% we give to King County?
That's required by state law.
Okay, we have to give it to the county just because of, is it because we're a contract city or?
No, no. Even if you have your own police department, you have to give that to the county that you reside.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo that one thing, one thing Sean said is that the, the percentages have been going the, the wrong way when we've brought the TBD up for a vote. If I remember right, it was, it was under 150 vote difference in 2013. 2015, it was closer to, it was over 200 vote difference, and then 2018, it was a huge difference. But if I remember correctly, we haven't changed our messaging. We didn't change messaging for any of those years, except we did add the phrase, or we made it more prominent that if this passes, all right, my cat decided to walk across the screen there. If it passes, we will remove the $20 car tab. And I think that's one, one thing, that if we're going to run this in big, bold letters across everything we put out for this, that needs to be the first thing stated. That definitely needs, and that's one way we can change our messaging on it. But my, my thought process is, is we have a terrible track record of running and running propositions in this city and winning them. I think we're, what, 0 for 6, 0 for 7, something like that? So if we're going to do it, we really need to work on the messaging very hard and make sure everyone understands where this is going. And, you know, it's been said that, you know, people will, I think it was Sean who said that there's a distrust of government in off-year elections. There's a distrust of local government on taxpayer spending, because everyone will put their ideas of what federal government or state government does with spending on the local level. And it might be one of those things that we just need to make sure everyone is understanding. We need to be more transparent, and we need to make sure everyone understands where these, where these funds will go and show them a plan of where the funds are going to go right away. So if we're going to run it, that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer?
Yeah, I, I agree with what the other council members have been saying. I, I think if we do choose to move forward with both or either of these, we should really look especially at the voter pamphlet information. It would be helpful to get that and really kind of noodle over that for a while. What stands out to me when I look especially at the TBD is that we're moving the burden from our residents. We're pulling it off of them and putting it on the shoppers in Covington, the people that are using the roads and contributing to congestion. And I think if our messaging is this, this is for you, the residents, we're moving it. So it's not just on the people who live here. I would be in favor of a 0.2 sales tax with a removal of the TBD, not both. And then as far as the, the 0.1 for the criminal justice, if we could use that to pay for additional officers in preparation for Lake Point, I think that would be a really smart move. That's my two cents on both.
Thanks, Jennifer. Christina?
Yeah, I'm going to start with the criminal justice tax. I think that's, again, a no-brainer. We should try, we should at least try. I mean, if it can get us a couple officers with Lake Point, with, not even with Lake Point, just with our growth in the city, that would be amazing. And I, I do agree with Sean. I think if we can postpone that to next year, there's just something about how things are presented. But in saying that, there's a reason big companies invest so much money in marketing. And I still have faith, I, I really do, that they're just not seeing it correctly. And I know everybody's echoing the same thing, but it's all in the marketing, all in the marketing. Whether that means we have to do a huge banner across, you know, 272nd and just say, it has to be obnoxious, obnoxious enough to get people's attention. No, you know, no marketing, no publicity is bad publicity. But, but I, I do believe that once it is understood, it will, it's a no-brainer. And I also would agree in substituting this for the car tabs and not have both. As far as timing, I'm not sure on this one, but I feel like it should get the attention it deserves and maybe do a special, do it during a special election, just so we can have the room and not, and not have it flush with everything else in people's mind. And if there's other taxes on there, they're not going to choose both, right? If it's, if I, if, you know, if I were voting and knew nothing about anything, I wouldn't vote for all the taxes. Maybe I'd choose one. But if, if, you know, in a special election, we could isolate this, it might present more likeable. But marketing, 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 that's, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Christina. Regan?
Thanks, Jeff. So I just want to talk about, I think the council's discussion around this is really going to, and it is a message that, that needs to get out to the community. And that we heard even after the last election, people were going to renew their tabs, and they were charged the license fee, and they'd called the city, we said, "We thought we got rid of those with this last election." We said, "Well, it didn't pass." And they were pretty upset about that. One of the things that really makes things difficult as far as marketing ballot propositions is there's a lot of rules and regulations that we have to abide by. Someone a little earlier mentioned about the voter pamphlet. For example, last time, we were not able to put anything in the voter pamphlet about the removal of the car tabs if this passed, because car tabs were not on the actual ballot. And so the law wouldn't, wouldn't allow us to do that. And so we're just really kind of peg-holed into certain things that we can share. So that makes it more difficult. I think where, where we do this is by a real concerted effort with council and community members, grassroots kind of efforts to get something like this passed. A group of staff at the last, the last one that we ran got together after work, and we would do, do things and hang signs and whatnot. But it's going to take more than that.
And I agree, Regan, because the last time this was run, I believe Beth, and correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, you were one of the ones that were out there helping spearhead this with, I believe it was with Sam, and trying to run this. And I don't think, and me included, I don't think any of the council were involved. We did have a prior city attorney who told us we shouldn't be involved, which was incorrect now that we find out later. So that was before Kathy, wasn't Kathy. And so I think with what Regan said, we do need to make sure and, and help push this, because the city cannot make certain comments on, on which direction we want to go. I don't like the state law that says we have to give 15% to the county, so I'm not sure how much effort that would take to change that, since they're not doing any of the work to get it passed. Unless it comes back to us through the sheriff's office to help with our officers, then I'm all for it. I would, I personally would like to see us go for both. Timing, though, definitely wait until next year, especially with what's going on and what's going to be happening over the next, or what may happen over the next year. So just seeing what direction we can go, but we will have to make a concerted effort to do that. And then I'll stop and let Beth chime in. She, she did a lot of work last year, or the last time, to help get this passed.
Yeah, thanks, Mary. Yeah, that was in 2017, and most of it was, you know, trying to figure out how to write the, the statement flyer. You know, trying to promote it on social media as a resident. But I think part of that, I think marketing is part of it, but the bigger piece is to get that community engagement and having, having workshops, letting people know what the budget looks like, breaking it down, where we're at, so people can see, see the numbers, right? And so, again, I think it also speaks to what Regan had mentioned before, is that there is a timing thing. And I, maybe you can remind myself and other council members if they forgot. Once we make a decision to add it, we can no longer, as a city, represent. But up until that point, if we want to... But up until that point, if we want to put feelers out as like workshops and things, just to kind of gauge community, maybe the appetite to revisit this on an election, is that, is that okay? I, where are the lines there? I, I, I was a little confused.
So do you mean if, if we hold an open house and say, um, this, the council's considering this TBD sales tax, is this something you'd support, that kind of?
Because like, once we file it, we can't really do a lot of that legwork, right?
Well, w- once it's filed, you cannot advocate, um, uh, for or against it.
Whether we're council members or city staff or what, is that correct? Okay, so.
Now, now city staff can, um, uh, on their own time, not working time though.
Okay, right. Like they were doing the signage and so forth. Okay. So, yeah, I just, I feel like we have to be creative about how we're outreach and, and not being creative as in being deceptive, but really engaging so that we can, we can try to get more buy-in before that, um, is filed, um, I think will help move along. On either one of them, to be honest with you, in my opinion, but.
Thank you, Beth. Um, Reagan, I just wanted to clarify something. You said council, but on our own time, can't council helps push out the message?
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Mayor. Um, th- there's, there's kind of a fine line. I just checking scrolling through to see if Mark's on here, but he's not, but, but we'll follow up. But, but really, if, if you're out as a council member, if you're representing the city, if you go speak to Rotary as a council member or, or Kiwanis or whoever, then it's, oh, um, we can only share the facts. So, um, this would increase taxes by this much, it would raise this much money, it would be spent on X, Y, and Z, right? Th- those kind of things. Um, uh, outside of that, then yes, I believe a council member can get out and sign wave and, and do those kind of things on their own time.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer.
Would you give me an example of a statement I might make as a council member that would not be fact?
Well, yeah, if, if you're at one of the service clubs that I mentioned and said, you should all really vote for this.
Okay, okay.
You can't say that.
Okay, gotcha. Cause I'm like, I don't lie, Reagan.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, discussion? Well, from what I'm hearing, everybody's in leaning towards moving forward on both of these. Um, I did not hear from Jared, but so Jared, did you have anything you wanted to add before I move on to going around again?
Nope, I don't really want to beat a dead horse. I agree. And I, my only thing was I would like it to be like, uh, in August, just because general elections are heated and very controversial sometimes, and the special elections tend to be a little more smooth sailing. So, but I agree with pretty much what everyone else has been saying.
Thank you, Jared. Beth.
Okay, I'll, I'll say one more thing. I, I think just to echo what Reagan said when we're, when, if there is promotion, if we move forward to it is, it's, it's about stating the facts and being there as a support to the community. Not necessarily trying to persuade anybody, but let them know the pros and cons of each decision. So they can feel like they're making an informed and unpressured, uh, decision, I think is, is important if we decide to move forward with outreach.
Thank you, Beth. Anyone else?
Mayor, can I add something? Um,
Yes.
Some of the discussion, thank you, has centered around which, um, which, uh, election, you know, special or primary or general to go out. And I, I think it really kind of depends on the year. It depends on what other entities are putting propositions forward. So I, I'd suggest to the council that, that you, um, if this is something you move forward on, um, maybe choose, uh, the year you might want it in, uh, if you did that. And then count, uh, staff can, can review what King County is putting forward and other entities and see where this, uh, works best. So it doesn't like, I think maybe Christina mentioned gets lost in the weeds, or maybe, maybe there's some synergy with something else, uh, things like that.
Okay, um, I heard most people saying not to do it this year in twenty one and to lean towards twenty two, but um, can you unshare your screen, Casey, so I can see everybody, please? There we go. Thank you. So, um, can I get a nod of heads if you would like to go forward with it next year in twenty twenty two? So a nod up and down is twenty twenty two and nod side to side is push it out. Okay, so it looks like everybody's going twenty twenty two, Reagan.
And, and which option, the criminal justice sales tax or TBD?
Are we looking at both council or, okay, consensus is to do both.
Okay, we will move forward with both then. Um, Casey, is there anything else you need?
Um, just to confirm, you want to do the full point two percent for TBD and the full point one percent for public safety? I'm seeing head nods. Okay, and, um, both in August.
Well, I.
Ish.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead, Reagan.
I was just going to say, um, Reagan suggested that we just do the year new, um, staff would bring back to council when the most optimal time would be to run it.
Okay, gotcha. I think that's all I need. Thank you.
Okay, Beth, you have another comment?
Yeah, just a quick question. Just, uh, remind me, last time there was a, a bit of an issue because we can't write a, a prop that says we are going to remove the twenty dollar and then add the point two. Right? Isn't that, wasn't that kind of a thing where?
Oh.
That's like a two-piece part of it and you can't, or?
You just need to word it properly. Um, you can't say, you can't say it will be removed because the council has to take a vote to make that happen. And maybe some council members will change their mind, right? But you can say it's the council and council's intention that if passed, then the twenty dollar card tab will be removed. You know, it, we, we don't want to, um, make people feel like it's a done deal once, once it's passed, because it still has to pass a vote from the council.
So are we, but we could certainly hold ourselves accountable to that, correct? Like what if, um, say voters approve something? We can't make a resolution to back to, to negate that really. I mean, well, you kind of could, I guess, but you wouldn't want to do that because that goes against what we're trying to accomplish, right?
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. So from sounds of things, we're going to move forward. We've given direction to bring both of these items back for a possible election in two thousand twenty two. And Reagan and team will bring back the possible elections that we will run this at. Am I correct, Reagan?
Yes, that sounds good, Mayor. And, and maybe if the timing works out well, this, um, might be a good time to bring back at our twenty twenty two, um, council summit in January and we'll kind of share what, what's, uh, the forecast looks like for, um, ballot propositions coming throughout the county and state. And, uh, go from there.
Sounds great. Is there anything else? All right, that concludes our business for our study session. So, um, we are adjourned until seven P M. So we can stop the recording and I will see everybody back at seven P M for our council meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.